We'll go ahead and call the regular June 2025 session of the Midland County Board of Commissioners to session. And will you please call, roll?
Commissioner Bone. Mr. Schulke.
Here.
Stamos. Gamble.
Here.
Dorian.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Chairperson Snyder.
Here.
Five present, two absent.
Thank you. Commissioner Schulke, will you please give the invocation and pledge?
Yes. Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you again for the freedoms we have and the peace that we have in our county, which unfortunately cannot be said in some other counties in America before, Lord. We pray for peace across our country and also peace for the war-torn countries in the rest of the world. I so thank you that we as a Board of Commissioners can come before you on behalf of our county to intercede for our constituents. And I pray blessings, health, and prosperity in Midland County and on all who live and work here. We also ask for clarity of mind and wisdom for us as a board as we make our decisions for Midland County. We ask all these things in your precious name, oh Lord.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next, we will go to the approval of the minutes for May 20th. I need a motion to approve those in support.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously carried. We need the acceptance of the claims and accounts.
General bank claims approved for the weeks of 4/14 through 4/17, $304,852.96, with total general fund expenditures $88,120.11. General bank claims for the weeks of 4/21 through 4/25 in the amount of $505,166.06, with total general fund expenditures $215,128.33. General bank claims for the weeks of 4/28 through 5/2, $279,749.40, with total general fund expenditures $56,239.14. General bank claims for the weeks of 5/5 through 5/9, $1,527,173.60, with total general fund expenditures $170,459.43.
Thank you. And we need a motion to pay the bills.
I'm ruled that we accept claims and accounts for the weeks mentioned.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously carried. We do not have a special program of the day today, so we'll move on to public comment. I just want to remind folks that public comment is for you to let us know what you want to tell the Board of Commissioners. We're not going to have communications back and forth. It's not a Q and A, but we certainly want to hear what you have to tell us today. So if we don't comment back, we're not being rude, we're just keeping it the way that it needs to be for public comment. So at this time, is there anyone who would like to come forward for public comment? Yes, come forward. There's a microphone, and if you want to state your name and address.
My name-
That's for our notes.
Okay. My name is Anna Marilat. I'll tell you who I am. I'm a lifelong resident of Sanford, very active in flood recovery, own several businesses in Sanford. My issue today is to speak with you about Four Lakes Task Force and specifically the issue of double assessment, double, triple, quadruple, and even more assessments of lots. I have handouts for you because I'm going to try to be so brief. It's a complicated issue. I have a lot of data to share with you on this. I became aware of my own personal double assessment about a year ago in April of '24. Since that point, I've discussed with Four Lakes, with Commissioner Snyder, local assessors. Recently, my interest has heightened because I did the work to go around the lake and find everyone who's impacted by these double, triple, and more assessments. And so it's like a bad car accident that you can't unsee. So now I'm in because there's a lot of people who are much less fortunate than I am with this issue. It creates great disproportionality and apportionment issues, which I know were brought up in here on Cove, but they weren't brought up specific to this issue of double and triple tax. So it's a new issue. There's far too many inequities and issues to share in a three-minute time slot. I would be glad to do that with a commissioner offline. We are, let me see. I want to be clear that I'm not an anti-Four Lakes person, please. I've been on many committees such as this. I was on the township board. I was on the village planning commission. So I understand how it is to sit in these seats and in the seats of Four Lakes. I'm not anti-Four Lakes. I want our lakes back. But I am pro-equity and pro-making things right. And there are households, people that will lose their homes over this. People in places like Maple Crest, Genesee, Telegraph, there's people that are going to lose their homes over this issue if we don't act. I do have some suggestions of creatively finding another monetary source, perhaps the inclusion of a countywide assessment to make right these wrongs. Or even the suggestion of Four Lakes when they wrote me was to get a court order to make changes to the assessment roles. I presume this board may have the power to do that, and I would implore you to do that. In wrap-up, I would like to say that I would like to be a part of this solution. I've done a ton of work, probably 40 hours' worth of work already, to bring this issue to light and bring you this data today. And I would be very happy, I'm very capable, to come alongside and help right this wrong. And I thank you for your time.
May I approach to not with-
Yeah, you can hand out your material.
Mm-hmm. That's my presentation.
Great, thank you.
Stretching showing all the properties.
Thank you, Anna. Do we have any more public comment?
Thank you.
Please come forward. State your name and address, please.
My name's Terry Ruggles. I live at 4545 Weeping Willow Road, Sanford, Michigan. When this originally started, they told us if you had lots back-to-back, you were paying one fee. So when we had the meeting up in Beaverton, I think that was two years ago, correct?
Yes.
I had just got my bill for two lots. And I went up there and I asked Dave, I said, "What's this?" He said, "Back-to-back, one price." And he said, "Well, we switched that. The paperwork was supposed to be in by the end of December." I said, "I didn't get no letter." I said, "When you're dealing with stuff like this, you send a certified letter." You know, you're dealing with money. I said, "I didn't get nothing." And he goes, "We'll see Spicer's after the meeting. We'll take care of it with the township." So I went to Spicer's, gave them my parcel numbers, my two parcel numbers and everything. And he said, "We'll send an email. We'll get it taken care of." I stopped on the way home. Edenville Township is where I pay my taxes. I told them, "You'll be getting a letter from Spicer's here." And it's over this double billing. And they asked me where I lived. I told them. And they said, "Well, a lady walked in." And she said, "Well, that ain't going to happen because you're in many farms in River Edge Farm." I said, "It's all the same subdivision." She said, "Daddy, you ain't going to be able to command those lots. That ain't going to happen." And I said, "Well, Spicer's is sending you information. They said they'll take care of it." So I thought it was taken care of. So here, month and a half ago, I got a bill for one lot. And I said, "Well, they must take care of everything." And then here about a week and a half ago, I get another bill for another lot. So it's not right. I'm $25,000 almost. I can't. I can't afford it, you know? Two lots there, they didn't keep their word. And I ain't the only person that's been lied to over this stuff. You know what I'm saying? It's just, they tell you one thing and do something different. And I've called them when this originally happened, and I never got a call back. I called three, four times. They never called me back to give me any information on nothing, like trying to railroad me. So it's not right. And if you guys can help change this, I'd appreciate it. Otherwise, I'll be selling and moving, you know what I'm saying? And then I'm going to take a loss on everything. And people don't understand that. There's people like us can't afford all this stuff, especially the elderly. I live down by, they can't afford that. And they don't care. So if you guys could help, I would appreciate it. And I thank you very much.
Harry, would you repeat your last name, please?
Ruggles. R-U-G-G-L-E-S.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
I'm just, it wasn't set up right how they've done this double thing. You know, a lot of people didn't know. They didn't get letters. And if they did, it was way too late. The time was out before you could even file. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Kim Walter, 4769 North Flint Road. I'm here to represent my mother. That's her property. So to go back, she purchased a piece of property for, it was a tax sale three years ago, and it was only a small lot, 60 foot. And it's adjacent to state land. So she purchased that, went to the Register of Deeds, and they said they was going to register it all in. I said about having an annex, and she said there was no reason, only for if you wanted one tax bill. So I says, "Yeah, eventually I'll do that." So I didn't do that. Whenever I get, as you guys know, you probably get about 70% of your mail is what you consider junk mail. You do not read. You just grind up. So that's what I do. And that's what the Four Lakes, I do with the Four Lakes. So it was probably about a month ago, she, my mother, she's 93, she says, "I got a bill saying we're being taxed on that extra lot." And so I says, "Well, let me look at it." So once I looked at that, and it says I missed the deadline, I went to Register of Deeds, and they said it's all in one. We have it registered all in one. And so they says, "If you want to annex, you have to go to your township." And so I did, and they said it's too late. And I told them that I never received anything from them, that I have to annex this property in a certain amount of time. They told me it was through Four Lakes. And I says, "Well, Four Lakes," I said, "It's Midland County, or I pay all my taxes. I pay my federal taxes, state taxes, and my local taxes to Midland County, Midland Township. This comes on my taxes. I should have got a formal letter from Edenville Township or Midland County." So that's why I'm here. I think that, as Mr. Ruggles said, that there's a lot of people that can't afford this. My mother's one of them. And it's not so much, there's some people can afford it. It's not so much why I'm here is whether we can afford it or not. It's all about equity. What is fair. These lots that most people are paying double on are not buildable. They're never going to build on it. They're never going to sell it. It's just a piece of their property for resale of their home, just as my mother's is. It will never get built on. In fact, it's so small, you'd have, it's almost impossible to build anything. So I just feel this is very unfair, that this should have been, if we have to annex, I did talk to my supervisor to back up a little bit. He says about annexing this. I says, "Now, do I annex this lot through Four Lakes now, since they have the right to tax this?" And he says, "No, all the annexes, all your subdivisions, all this is done at the township." So if that's the case, if they're the official to annex my property, I would think that they would be the officials to tell me that I have a certain deadline to annex this property.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Your three minutes-
So I appreciate the time. And if there's anything you can do, we gladly appreciate it. Remember, we're not alone. There's a lot of people, a lot more that's affected than that's right here. My neighbor is, and he's out of town. He would have been here.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Isaac Kuhn. I'm from 2725 North Peterson Drive, Sanford. And I'm here because the same thing, mostly, the dual assessments. I have less than half an acre combined, and I've only gotten one letter saying that I have one, you know, one parcel. I didn't get a second parcel letter, which I didn't even know about until I was informed of by Annie. And I didn't even know that I had to pay a second time because I didn't have another letter, or that I can combine them all, because I didn't even know I had to. This was even a problem, you know? This is the only letter I have. And $26,000 is combined with both of them. You know, that other property is like .1 acre. And you're going to charge me $13,000 for a lake that has a little fire pit on it? And I was not informed about anything, other than I owe 13 grand by the end of July. So, you know, it'd be, should definitely send better mail over a better line, because obviously I'm missing stuff here. You know, I don't have all the information. I didn't even know that this was a thing until I got this random letter last month, you know? And so I'm going to have to sell and move. I can't afford $26,000. I just had a daughter. She's 10 months old. So affecting a lot, generational effects here, you know? Just really frustrating. That's all I have to say.
Congratulations on the birth of your daughter.
Thank you, Mr. Kuhn. Any other public comment?
I'm Jacob Federer, 546 Jesse Road in Sanford. On January 12th, I was fortunate enough to have purchased my house that I grew up in in Sanford. I hope to raise my children there and give them the same opportunities and connections in Sanford that I had when I was growing up. A few months later after that, changed everything. On May 19th, 2020, like thousands of others, our house was destroyed by the dam failure. I live one street away from what used to be the Sanford Marina. When the emergency lures came through, I quickly brought my family to a hotel in town. I returned an hour later to try to salvage a few belongings, to find my home was already under six feet of water. Our single house and everything inside of it was destroyed. Thanks to the support of my family and the community, we chose to slowly rebuild. Over the following years, we're committed to staying in Sanford. During that time, our elderly neighbor decided not to rebuild. She offered us the chance to purchase her small lot. Us wanting a little bit more yard space, we bought and removed her cabin that was on there. We're still working on some unfinished projects even today around the home, but we're grateful to be living in this community for a long time. It gave me hope to see that progress is being made towards rebuilding the dams and restoring the lakes. Like many, I believe that brighter days were ahead. That changed when I learned about the special assessment. I'll be honest, I hadn't stayed completely up to date with the task force proceedings. When I found out about that I was going to be charged for both of my properties, and that I had missed the deadline to combine them, looking into the issue further, I was basically told that it was my fault for not knowing about the deadline. And I was sent multiple letters explaining this. These are the letters that we get. They look like newsletters, not official documents, that's explaining what we're going to owe, unless I do something by a certain date, which would be combining my lots, which I still cannot find a document that says that we had to do that by a certain date. I also recently saw that I live on Jesse Road, just off water, and my assessment is double the amount of all the other private roads in my area. And I have no idea why. The communication on Four Lakes Task Force has been unclear and inadequate. I'm a full-time first responder, often work 60 to 70 hours a week, and I spent the last years on my time off rebuilding our home. I'm not hardly on Facebook, and I don't read newsletters that are mailed to my house. And now families like mine are going to be penalized for something that we're never properly informed about. This isn't just about oversight, it's about fairness. We already lost everything once due to the failures beyond our control. We are doing everything that we can to stay, rebuild, and remain part of this community. They have the opportunity to work with us and people like, work with people like me and others to stay who are in the same situation. We're not asking for special treatment. We're asking for fair and reasonable solution. Please don't let this assessment drive more people from their homes in your community. Thanks.
Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Any more public comment? Please state your name and address.
Gina Grassmick, 204 West Barden Road, Sanford. I also own two properties, parcels on Sanford Lake, which I have been assessed for. One of them, my home is on. The other is vacant land that will, well, may or may never be built on. It is not. It's just vacant land at this point. The total for my two assessments for my home is $42,880. And for my vacant land was $35,725, for a total of $78,585 assessment. As others have said, I'm all for the lake coming back. I can't wait. So I am rooting for a good turnout for all of this, but we weren't giving proper notification of what these assessments were going to be. Also, others haven't brought this up, but in, from my own perspective, we live on a canal off of the main lake, and I would estimate that three-quarters of my assessed property would be considered unnavigable, less than four feet waterways to the main lake. The main reason these canals have been filled over the years is due to the Crosby drain ditch being installed back in the 80s. And the Meridian school ditch is being modified to increase the flow of water from the wetland property without any permits from the DEQ, which allowed thousands of tons of sand to spill in the canal. But no action was taken to remove any of the damage. I believe the DEQ did contact the school and offer some kind of fines to them, but I don't know that for sure, because at that point, they said I was out of the picture, and they would handle it with the school. So, and then last fall, this unnavigable four-foot restriction came up when only a very small portion of my lakeside property was to be cleaned up of the debris that had accumulated over the last four years. And a decision was made, apparently by the Sanford Lake Improvement Board, that if the water was not four feet deep, they weren't going to touch it. My question, I guess, is if these unnavigable waters are assessed at the same rate as the main lake, or are we have a special assessment because they're not navigable waters, accessible to anything? The, let's see, I missed a spot here someplace, just to say. Also, part of the issue was the drainage. Well, I mentioned the Crosby drain and the school drain, but they have filled in these canals for years. And that used to be navigable. Boats went in, jet skis went in. I do have one point on one side of my property I can get a dock in, and hopefully when the water comes back-
Ms. Grassmick, I apologize. It's not up here, but your time is well, well-
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, it's-
Yes.
Okay. Well, I want to thank you for listening to all my issues, and hopefully some of it can all be resolved at some point in time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment today.
And Todd is our paramotorian, so I did just want to clarify, he's the one that keeps the time for us.
Well, that's fine. I believe you just because I was playing up there.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any more public comment? Bridgette?
Jenna, I just wanted to say that since the screen has blanked on us, technology is great until it isn't. Commissioner Gamble will keep the time and let people know when it's up.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yep. He's the official paramotorian for our board, so that's his job. We appreciate him.
I'm Cynthia Rand. I live at 230 West Barden Road. I'm across the canal from Gina. And we have had our canal fill in over the years. We go in and, it's, we can't get a boat in and out anymore. So we bought 100 foot over from a neighbor who wanted to sell it to us. So we have two lots. And we have our dock on this little 100-foot lot. Our view is not of the lake or of a gorgeous waterway. It's of a monkey canal, which breeds mosquitoes. So we are paying two assessments as well. One of them is the larger one, $22,000 for the home lot, which is not on navigable property. It's on a swamp. And we pay, I forgot what the, it was like $12,000 for the 100-foot without any structures on it, except for our dock access. So, you know, I did not get any information on this two lots deal as well. But it seems like we should at least be notified of what is the formula for the charge, right? Because, and it should be based on whether or not you truly have lake access. And we don't, from the main lot. And our neighbor who's down the next door to us, further up the canal, he's being charged. He has a stream, even when the lake fills back in, it'll just be, oh, maybe a three-foot wide stream. It's not really a lagoon anymore. So I think that somehow we have to clarify for homeowners what this assessment amount is and why. And some of the terms of what's defined as accessible and lake access need to be clarified, because something that might have been lake access 20 years ago is no longer lake access now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comment?
Well, I think the public comments are only one time. We've received your comments, and we appreciate them a great deal, so thank you. Well, you get one time, and you get that time allotted in there. You've already had your chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment during this time? Please state your name and address.
I am Kayla Stryker. I am a resident of Midland County, actually Todd's district, but I'm also the treasurer of Four Lakes Task Force. So I wanted to address a couple of things today. Dave Kepler couldn't be here, but I thought I could kind of help fill in a little bit of information here. Definitely understand the frustration, and we've handled a lot of it firsthand. There are 7,300 parcels in our district and 6,400 homeowners. So as you can imagine, there's a lot of different situations and a lot to juggle. But I thought I could help with defining Part 307 a little bit. So Part 307 is the legal lake level statute that we operate under and what we're assessing under. With Part 307, when the county Boards of Commissioners approved that assessment role on February 6, 2024, that assessment role was set. Apportionments cannot be changed. So an apportionment is the overall percentage and individual lot is getting of the assessment. Once that assessment role is set, those apportionments cannot be changed. If you were to make a combination, it would change everybody's apportionment percentage, which we cannot do because the rules have been finalized. In the event that you wanted to open that back up, what that means is going back to the Four Lakes Task Force Board and the Joint Boards of Commissioners for approval and reopening the legal appeal process, which, as you all just saw, took 14 months previously. I do want to provide a little bit of insight on our communications. And we did put out this newsflash recently that summarized our communications from 2020, because obviously this is a huge community project and a lot of money we're talking about. So we wanted to summarize kind of what have we done to communicate to people? And what we've done is seven mailings, certified first-class mailings to homeowners. We've put out 12 public notice- We've put out 12 public notices on the county's websites and the Midland Daily News and the Gladwin Record. We have had 25 board meetings, we've had over 8,000 emails, 233 newsflashes, which we have 6,000 subscribers on our newsflashes, 32 webinars, and 334 Facebook posts. So I say that not to, I'm not trying to put it in anybody's face, what I'm saying is that we have communicated to the best extent that we feel we can. Obviously, we're always striving to do more and communicate more, and we try and be as absolutely transparent as we can be, but all of that was done in an effort to notify people of the assessments and what they could expect on their upcoming tax bills. Getting to the issue of combinations specifically, and just wave at me, I feel like I'm getting pretty close to my time.
Real close, 30.
Am I out? Am I?
You have 40 seconds.
Okay. On the issue of combinations specifically, so we did communicate on combinations going back to 2022, I can provide the documentation on that, informing people that they needed to have their lots combined by a certain date. We don't specifically tell people to combine their lots because that would be legal or financial advice, and it may not be best for each person to combine their lots. So we never said, you need to get your lots combined, but we did say this is the deadline to do so. And then one final clarification, I think there's a misunderstanding on combinations that if you combined your lot, basically your second assessment goes away. It doesn't erase an assessment, it would combine it onto one lot, the combined frontage, so the result would be a combined assessment that's greater than either one of the separated lots.
You're up. Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla. Any more public comment? All right. Seeing none, we're going to go to our standing committee reports, resolutions, and committee report number one, please.
Dated June 13th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration Operations Committee recommend approval of the attached changes to County Policy 602.1, disposition of county property as submitted by the procurement and contracts administrator. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette Snyder, Chairperson, Eric Dorian, Larry Shulkey, Administration Operations Committee.
Thank you. Commissioner Dorian?
Madam Chairwoman, the Administration and Operations Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 84-8-24.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Any commissioner discussion? Ann call roll, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Bone is absent. Shulkey?
Yes.
Stamos is absent. Gambrell?
Yes.
Dorian?
Yes.
Chairperson Snyder?
Yes.
Five yes, two absent, motion carries.
Thank you. Committee report number two, please.
Dated June 13th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration Operations Committee recommend approval of the agreement with Kerry Kenny for provision of yoga instruction for the Monarch Academy students. The term of this agreement is August 19, 2025, through June 3, 2026. Funding for this service agreement is already available in the 2025 budget. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette Snyder, Chairperson, Eric Dorian, Larry Shulkey, Administration Operations Committee.
Thank you. Commissioner Dorian?
Madam Chairwoman, the Administration and Operations Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 32-6-25.
Thank you. Do we have public comment on this item? Commissioner discussion? Ann call roll, please.
Commissioner Bone is absent. Commissioner Shulkey?
Yes.
Stamos is absent. Commissioner Gambrell?
Yes.
Dorian?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Chairperson Snyder?
Yes.
Five yes, two absent, motion carries.
Thank you. Committee report number three, please.
Dated June 13th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration Operations Committee and the Finance Committee have reviewed the agreement with Carpal Computer Systems Incorporated for access to their Caliber RMS interface program. The cost associated with this agreement is $18,000 for the first year, with an annual maintenance fee of $3,000 in subsequent years. We recommend approval of the agreement and that the administrative controller be authorized to make any necessary budget adjustments. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette Snyder, Chairperson, Eric Dorian, Larry Shulkey, Administration Operations Committee, Larry Shulkey, Todd Gambrell, Finance Committee.
Thank you. Commissioner Dorian?
Madam Chairwoman, the Administration and Operations Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 35-4-24.
Thank you. And Commissioner Shulkey?
Chairwoman, the Finance Committee recommends the adoption of Agenda Item 35-4-24.
Great, thank you. Do we have any public comment? Any commissioner discussion? Ann, please call roll.
Commissioner Shulkey?
Yes.
Stamos is absent. Gambrell?
Yes.
Dorian?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bone is absent. Chairperson Snyder?
Yes.
Five yes, two absent, motion carries.
Committee report number four, please.
Dated June 13th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee recommend approval of the proposed adjustments to the 2025 budget as submitted by the Finance Director. Respectfully submitted, Larry Shulkey, Todd Gambrell, Finance Committee.
Thank you. Commissioner Shulkey?
The Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 29-6-25.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment? Any commissioner discussion? I would just like to say, I know we go through these pretty fast, but just as a reminder, we have committees broken out, we have Administration, Operations, Finance, and Human Services, where these are brought to committee and we thoroughly talk about them and make our decisions, and then bring them to the board for the formal, so this is the formal approval or nay. So just a reminder on what we're doing, I know it seems we're going kind of fast. Ann, please call roll.
Commissioner Stamos is absent. Commissioner Gambrell?
Yes.
Dorian?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone is absent. Shulkey?
Yes.
Chairperson Snyder?
Yes.
Five yes, two absent, motion carries.
Committee report number five, please.
Dated June 13th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee recommend approval of the Michigan Department of Treasury Form 614, AKA L4029, 2025 Tax Rate Request. Approval of the 2025 Tax Rate Request Form authorizes the county operating millage 4.8882 mills to be levied in July. There will be a separate 2025 Tax Rate Request Form submitted in the fall to request levy of the remaining taxing authorities in December. Respectfully submitted, Larry Shulkey, Todd Gambrell, Finance Committee.
Thank you. Commissioner Shulkey?
The Finance Committee recommends the approval of Agenda Item 30-6-25? Oops, the other was 30, the other one's 29, I'm sorry. There's 30-6-25.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Commissioner discussion? Ann, please call roll.
Commissioner Gambrell?
Yes.
Dorian?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bone is absent. Shulkey?
Yes.
Stamos is absent. Chairperson Snyder?
Yes.
Five yes, two absent, motion carries.
Committee report number six, please.
Dated June 13th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Human Services Committee recommend approval of the attached proclamation honoring Richard Dick Ripke for his longstanding service and contributions to public safety in Midland County. Respectfully submitted, Elena Smith, Chairperson, Eric Dorian, Jeanette Snyder, Human Services Committee.
Commissioner Smith?
Madam Chairwoman, the Human Services Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Any commissioner discussion? I would just like to say, Mr. Ripke was from Edenville Township, very familiar with him and his service, and unfortunately, he passed away this year, and so we did just want to thank and recognize him for his services to the community and how much we appreciated him. And so I would be remiss if I didn't say something about him during this time.
You're here.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Dorian?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Chairperson, Bone is gone. Shulkey?
Yes.
Stamos is absent. Gambrell?
Yes.
And Chairperson Snyder?
Yes.
Five yes, two absent, motion carries.
All right. So no requests, petitions, and communications. We have one item of old business, Ann, could you read the item?
I could, but I don't have it.
Okay.
I don't have the old business, I'm sorry.
Do we need to make a motion?
Not for an old business, for new business, we'll make a motion. Old business, I just read it and then you guys approve it. But to bring up new business, we have to have a motion. I don't, sorry. All right, so the old business dated June 13, 2025, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, I recommend the following appointments to various boards and commissions. Economic Development Corporation of the County of Midland, 338. Sean Panasic is Management and Business Sector Representative for a partial first term due to the resignation of Anna Merlat, expiring December 31, 2026. Emily Burgess as Township Government Representative for a partial first term due to the resignation of Mike Wood, expiring December 31, 2030. Michelle Van Est is Financial Sector Representative for a partial first term due to the resignation of Angela Heine, expiring December 31, 2030. Midland County Emergency Medical Services Advisory Board, Kim Heisler as the Midland County Township Association Representative for a first, I'm sorry, for a partial first term due to the resignation of Kevin Ray. The term of this appointment shall be effective June 1, 2025, through December 31, 2027. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette Snyder, District Number 1, Midland County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. So, so I know Ann said something, I know Jessica said something, so Bill, do we need a motion for this? Do we need a motion to bring the old business forward and a support? Okay.
Not old business, Bill, just new business. We don't need a motion for old business, we've never done a motion for old business, but if you want to, I can include it.
Let's do it.
Thank you. Thank you for being flexible.
We had old business, old business, Agenda Item 117-12-24 to our agenda.
Thank you. And support?
Support.
And it's a voice, vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to new business.
No, hang on, now we have to do a motion to approve that letter.
Okay.
So we need a motion to, for, for the appointments to the boards and commissions, and you wrote the, you drafted the letter, so someone else needs to make the motion.
I move that we approve that letter as presented to make the appointments.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Famously carries. And now we move on to new business, and I just want to point a clarification, do we have one or two items? And can we bring them both forward at the same time?
There are two. There are two items of new business. Yes, we can bring them, we just need a motion to bring both of them.
All right. I will need a motion and a support to bring two items of new business forward.
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
And I don't have that letter either, Jess, I'm sorry. I'm, I know, really, I'm not kidding. It's okay. I have the, I have the one you just gave me.
Here's the first one.
It's okay. It's okay, you're fine, no worries. Nobody died.
We're an amazing team, we're just working together to get it done.
No one died, it's perfect.
All right.
I should have been more prepared, my fault.
All right, and the new business number one, please.
Dated, dated June 13, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, I'm requesting this body consider the attached appeal of a FOIA response by Ms. Renita Bonides. Respectfully submitted, Jim Stamos, District Number 4, Midland County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, and I need a motion.
I move that we consider the attached appeal on the FOIA request.
And support?
Support.
Do we have public comment on this item?
Yes.
Greetings, Joe Bonides, 1191 East Phillips Court, Homer Township. A few quick points for the Midland County Clerk election of 2024. One, my wife fully registered as a write-in candidate for this election, and if I go online, I see 670 write-in votes. Since I attended the closing of the early voting site, I'm fairly certain that this is an unadjudicated pile of stuff, and there is no way to know how many votes my wife received or where they came from, i.e. which precinct. Two, my township signed a contract with the county to perform early voting in the same manner they would, i.e. precinct-level reporting. We spent $10,000 to cover three precincts. The data is not available at the precinct level. Three, while at the closing of the early voting site, I witnessed one of the machines spitting out a tape. One of the volunteers went over, looking at the tape and started commenting, "Oh, look, Mickey Mouse, Donald Duck," et cetera. Lisa Bentley crossed the stage, hit a button to stop the machine, ripped the tape off the machine, crumpled it up while saying, "We don't need that." That tape was never seen again, and was not at the Board of Canvassers, and was presumably discarded. Four, the workers at the early voting, voting close interacted primarily with only one blue election bag. They pulled out what were presumably daily write-in ballot envelopes, which were properly diverted by the machine. These ballots were separated between valid write-ins and Mickey Mouse, et cetera. After counting the valid write-ins, the ballots were bundled and placed in a single blue ballot bag. They were not recombined, but are segregated. In conclusion, the county clerk race got the most write-in votes for any race on the ballot. The other local races did not have write-ins, but county clerk did. There was no separation of the wheat from the chaff. 61 people from somewhere in the county, we don't know where, expressed their legal vote for an alternate candidate, but we would never know that from the published results. Thank you.
Thank you. More public comment? I started like to give my back up.
Good morning, my name is Jill Booth, I'm from Homer Township. I attended the November 5, 2024 Early Voting Center canvassing to witness the county official canvassing of that site. I'm a certified election inspector, having renewed my certification on July 16, 2024. The mandatory county provided training includes how to validate qualified writing candidates by precinct, either using what they call the paper book, poll book, declared write-in tally of vote sheet, or appropriate totals tape with the images of the write-ins. It's included in my handout, the instructions in the training. So either of these methods could have given the precinct level reporting for write-ins. We arrived at the early voting canvas near 8:00 PM. We were told by the county clerk, who was called in by the early voting clerk, Lisa Bentner Rich, that we had to sit down in the auditorium seats during the canvas. The early voting was set up on the back half of the stage. Soon after 8:00 PM, the two inspectors began to process the ballots marked with write-ins. The processing of write-in results was very slow. It seemed that the inspectors were unaware they needed to be entered on a recommended tally form, until Lisa instructed them to use this sheet. We couldn't see which sheet, obviously, but it started moving faster about an hour into the manual count. At the following county canvas, we found out write-in totals weren't tallied by precinct, and were told by our county clerk this wasn't a state requirement. State election law that I read, 168.720J, Sections 11 and 12, addresses combining all county precincts into one titled EV, but it requires a minimum of 250 represented precincts. It also states the EV results shall be added to each precinct. Chapters 4 and 13 in the State Election Officials' Manual also affirm this practice. Why would our county teach the best methods during election inspector training and not perform it themselves? How could the electronic and hard copy poll books be reconciled, the counts certified and published, without valid write-in results by precinct? If the early voting canvas was done according to the county training- If the early voting canvas was done according to the county training manual, there would be an accurate tally for each valid write-in candidate per precinct represented at the early voting center. To change, to charge a candidate for this data, which should have been public in the first place, is wrong and unethical. The data should have been reconciled during county canvassing prior to certification. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more public comment? Mr. Schulke?
Madam Chairman, can I, can I make a motion? I know I suspect Renita is going to talk, I would like to, I would, I know she's going to have a lot to present, and I think maybe it'd be helpful for us to hear some of those things, so I move that we give Mrs. Bonides an additional five minutes, so a total of eight minutes, to present her FOIA appeals case.
Okay. Can I have a second for that motion?
Support.
All right. Is there a commissioner discussion?
Yeah, I don't think we can give one person extra time. So, all these other people have showed up today, we held them to their three minutes. There's absolutely no, nothing in the rules that would allow extra time. So we can't treat one person differently than everybody else, in my opinion.
Okay.
As the parliamentarian.
Ben, do you want to comment? I think, I got that recommendation from Chairman Stamos, and so I don't know if he talked to you, we, there was a request of that, I think beforehand, and do you want to make a comment about that?
I can make a comment. Your request is to suspend the rules. Your motion encompasses a suspension of the rules and allowing for an additional time. That was seconded, and now it's up for a vote. That's essentially, the Board of Commissioners makes this determination.
You can make a public comment, if you'd like.
No, no.
Well, we'll finish this discussion, and then we'll have, um...
Make that motion, I think it's 2:30.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, any more discussion amongst the commissioners? Do we?
I'm going to do a roll call.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Is there any precedent for doing this? Has there been other times where we've extended public comment?
You're going to have to ask the commissioner, or direct it to Bridget or Bill.
In my experience, there has been no motion to suspend the rules to add additional time for public comment, by history. My memory's not great.
I was just going to say, in the 30-plus years I've been here, I've never done it.
I don't recall a time where you've done this before. Not in my tenure do I remember us doing this before, so...
It's not meant to take away from Ms. Bonides' presentation, it is meant to follow, simply follow the rules that we've applied to everyone else today.
Okay. All right, we'll do a roll call.
Commissioner Smith. This is to allow Ms. Bonides to have an additional five minutes to present her...
Uh, no.
Commissioner Bone is gone, Commissioner Schulke?
Yes.
Commissioner Stamos has gone, Commissioner Gambrow?
No.
And Commissioner Dorian?
As a one-time only, yes.
And Chair Person Snyder?
Yes.
All right, so she can get eight minutes, if you'd put that on your phone.
Please state your name and address.
Renita Bonides, 1191 East Phillips Court, in Homer Township. I submitted a FOIA request for the 61 ballots from the early voting center that I witnessed being counted and tallied. I was sent a response saying I could have them, but it would cost $611.86 to get those I was at the early voting. As was already stated, Joe and Jill were also present at that canvas at the early voting center. We witnessed the ballots from the early voting site from all nine days of early voting, having been in one blue bag that they pulled out and separated. Those ballots were in one bag, which I stated in my appeal that I sent to the Board of Commissioners, Chair Jim Stamos, stating that they were there, they should be able to be taken back out, tallied by precinct, so that I could actually have my results at a precinct level for the county. You all received a PowerPoint presentation, which I'm not able to show here, so the public will not be able to see what I'm talking about. But in that, and I do video the Board of Canvasser meetings, and have been doing that for the last two and a half years, as part of an education of the public. In that Board of Canvasser meeting, when I asked why my precinct's results were not given, it was told that it was just a lump sum, it was early voting. As I showed in my documentation, I actually called other counties, I talked to their Board of Canvasser members, and they told me that their early voting centers were indeed separated out by precincts. You have that information. I gave you a document that showed my notes, actually, of those phone calls stating how they did it at their Board of Canvasser meeting, so that they could report it at a precinct level. The document that I received from the early voting showed my 61 votes, and it shows them all as one lump sum. Even though the document itself indicates that there should be a separation by township, city, ward, or precinct, that was not done on this document, and when we got to Board of Canvasser, it was also not done there. I gave public comment there and asked why it was not. I was told that it didn't have to be. After the election, the second Board of Canvasser meeting, I was handed a document that showed Renita 157 votes. This is the only evidence I have of the total number of votes I received in that election. There was no other document that was produced for me that had those votes totaled out. And when you go to the precinct reporting on the county website and go into the state website, one of the comparatives I used was Saginaw, because I knew at their early voting site, they also had a presidential write-in candidate. Their report online will show you that that was properly adjudicated, and that you can find the precinct where that one vote took place. When you go to our website, report at the state level for the presidential candidates, there were actually three write-ins for the presidential candidate, but you would not know that looking at the report that the state produced. Instead, they had a statistical adjustment to say that they had to write off 14 votes, because they couldn't allocate them to particular candidates on the precinct report. I also showed you where there were two school board candidates that were write-ins. Those individuals' names also do not appear in the final election results that are online. And these are all on the official MPS, or Midland County results. The point of all of this is that I went through the proper channels. I registered, I was an official write-in candidate, people voted for me, and I was not able to find anything. In fact, I would like someone to show me anywhere that it shows that I was a write-in candidate, I was a valid write-in candidate, and that I received 157 votes online. It seems that if I went through that process, I should be able to see my name somewhere as having run in that election, but I can't. And then when I asked for verification of this information, so I could have my own breakout by precinct, I was told it would cost $611. I do not believe that, after following the proper channels, to become a valid write-in candidate for people having cast votes for me, that all of that should be taken away. And then when I asked for the actual documents, which again, there's 61 ballots sitting in a bag, it should not take more than about 15 to 30 minutes to sort those out, but I'm told that no, that can't be done. And this amount of minimal time, I do not believe should be charged for as a valid write-in candidate, and for a report that should be able to be found online at the state level, just like it is in other counties. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Speak during public comment, please.
Absolutely. Please state your name and address.
Ann Minery, Midland County Clerk. Oh, okay, out of time? All right. Ann Minery, Midland County Clerk. While I can appreciate that Ms. Bonides is upset by the cost of her request, you all should be under the understanding that there are 10,000 ballots that were cast during early voting, and even though she believes all ballots are contained in one particular area, I don't know that to be true until we break the seal. We have to break the seal with two people from our office, because those ballots are still under security, and will be until October of 2026. So, as the chief election official here in Midland County, we are going to do our best to get her her information in a timely manner, but we also have to prepare in case we have to spend more time going through all the ballots. So, that, that part isn't exactly accurate, but that's okay. You know, a couple other things that we, that she's been saying, that, you know, the Board of Canvassers don't look at write-in ballots, that's correct. Write-in ballots are processed at the precinct on election day. We handled early voting, where all of our ballots were separated between county and city, and they were not separated by precinct. And I can tell you that we're not the only ones in the state that did it that way. We're not required to separate them by precinct, and it takes a lot more time to separate individual precinct information when you're not required to. So, we decided here in Midland that we weren't going to do that, and as the chief election official here in Midland County, I get to make that decision. So, again, I'm happy to give her her information that she's looking for, but it is going to take time, and we do have to break the seal, we do have to maintain those records, because they are under security still. And so, even though she's upset by the cost, I only charged her for my wage, not the wage of two people that are required to do the job. So, at the end of the day, she's actually not even being charged the 611, we just need her to pay a half of that as a deposit, so we can complete the task and determine what the actual cost is going to be. I am, however, going to re-figure the calculation based on the lowest paid employee capable of doing the job, which will be my, my chief deputy, and so she will have a new figure that she can pay half of to get the information she's looking for. So at the end of the day, if you want more information about how early voting's run, please come see me. I'm more than happy to talk to you about how Midland County handles the election, I've been doing it for 35 years, and I think I do a good job. So, if not, then there are other people out there that can run, right?
Thanks, Ann.
This is living in a democracy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
John?
John Kiefer, in light of recent events, I'd like to not give my address, so... Am I afforded the same eight minutes that Ms. Bonides was afforded?
We didn't make, we didn't take a vote on that, so...
Fair enough. Okay, I'll move quickly. So, a couple things. First off, we're here for the appeal of the money, so as Ann said, the, the estimate is just simply that. If it ends up being less time, then obviously, money would be refunded, but without knowing what's there, 10,000 ballots is certainly a lot to sort through. But, there's a lot of other things laced inside of this. First off, the tally sheets, and I believe 168.720J was referenced, talks about the two methods that you can tally write-in votes. We do, in fact, utilize the tally sheets, those tally sheets do have Ms. Bonides' name on them, and how many votes per precinct she got, those are included in the poll book. I believe she also stated that they should be brought to the canvas to be tabulated. That is against the law, that's not the law anywhere. No Board of Canvassers actually tabulates the write-in votes at the canvas. And then, the ballots separated by precinct, I think we need to draw some understanding that the results aren't to be separated by precinct, which they are, if you look, all results are separated by precinct, the write-in votes are not. They are done at the tally here, but I want you to understand that if you voted for Donald Trump at the canvas, that was added to the correct precinct, those votes are awarded to the correct people in the reports and stuff. She also references the website, that is not the, the official canvass is in the books and the vault, and there are some notes on who, who got what write-in votes there. I think that's it, I really wasn't prepared to speak on this, I didn't know that there would be such a big presentation about it, but those are the high points. Oh, the last thing, many people, it was talked about Saginaw and Bay City, I started going through and looking at people's reports, I just went down through the alphabet, I didn't even make it through the Cs. Allegan does it just like us, Aronak does it just like us, Paraga does it just like us, CAF does it just like us, Chaboygan does it just like us, Charloboy does it just like us, so I mean, they're, I'm not even out of the Cs, I have more to support, more people do it just like us, the exact same way. I think I've exceeded my time, thank you, that's all I have for today.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Any more public comment? Do we have any commissioner discussion?
Yes. If you want to pass. So, I, I thought I needed to take a look at this personally, to see about this, Renita is in my district, but there's also, there, in her information, she mentioned a couple other school board. People said, I thought, okay, I should check on that. And so, in your, so you're going to see that. First, I found, and these other candidates are actually in Grashit County, so I took a look at Grashit County to see what they have, and I happened to find a, a letter from the Michigan Bureau of Elections, and if you turn on the page two, it talks about actions that county clerks are supposed to take, all valid write-in votes cast for the above-listed candidates, and they were, this letter from the Bureau of Elections was from the state, the state candidates, and I just assumed by extension, we go to the local ones. Said, please advise the appropriate city and township clerks to instruct their precinct boards to record any valid write-in votes cast for the indicated candidates, and any other districts listed above that falls within your county. So, oh, it looked like that should be done, happened in through, also to see the list of valid votes.
We do that.
Okay. And so, we had the write-ins, you'll see a tab, this is for the Grashit County, you'll see have a list of just the local write-ins, you could see all the, all the approved write-in candidates. If you go to Midland, it's like you would not find that information, actually, or I couldn't find it, at least. So then, the next sheet, you'll see the results for the St., the St. Louis, this is, they were St. Louis Public School Board members. Why am I interested in that? In Jasper Township, we have some people who have their kids go to theirs, so I want to make sure they get a chance to have their votes counted, and some of the, and they were two candidates that got votes, they got three for each, and it's in that packet information that Renita had passed on. And then, your fourth sheet is showing that Grashit County showed by, these are write-in votes, and showed, showed the, the writing for the, the St. Louis Public School Board members, and you'll see there's the names for Stephen James, Edward George, on the next page is Charlotte Tate Trevino. They got votes in Midland County, though they each got three, the tally that Renita had, so it didn't change the results, but it, it's disappointing to me that these write-in candidates got a precinct-by-precinct result for them, but we don't, the write-in candidates in Midland County don't do it. Now, I just picked Grashit County out of, because they were the school board members and affected our ones, and I wanted to see what was, you know, validate, you know, is this, is this other counties, do they do that? Well, maybe not across, I don't know about across the state, but, you know, the, I don't know if the two that got votes, if they'd have to put in a FOIA request to get their results, like Renita has to do, or they say, hey, there, there you can see the results they have by precinct of what they got in the writings. So, I believe we should support Renita Bonides' request for results by precinct at no charge. Something about other candidates would have had, say, in this case, the school board. Thank you.
The appeal is of the amount of money requested...
The appeal is of the amount of money requested for the service to be provided. That is, that is the scope of the board's decision today.
So the new business item number two. Anne, you read that?
New business item number one is the, for the, for the board to consider the attached appeal of a FOIA response by Ms. Bonides. So you're just dealing with the appeal. This other stuff is just a lot of information for all of you, I think. Not directly related to the appeal. She's appealing because of the cost.
Okay.
So this is asking you, by Chairman Stamos, asking you to consider the attached appeal. And I've already indicated that I'm going to amend the amount and resubmit it to Ms. Bonides. But that's what this is for, not any of this other stuff.
Okay.
Simply for the appeal.
So there's a, you know, they didn't have to do it, say, for my, once we're affected, people in my, in Jasper Township.
Larry, I have that. It's in the full canvas. So you just need to ask me for it. It's available. So it's there.
So to move this forward, the idea continues to be that we cannot treat certain people one way and other people another way. This is the foundation of the law and rules. There are rules for the FOIA request. There are rules for how much the FOIA request costs. It appears to me that the extra information is ancillary. The issue at hand is very, very narrow. Do, does Ms. Bonides have to pay the $611? Is that a reasonable amount? Who gets to determine if that's a reasonable amount? Well, we do. We get to determine if that's a reasonable amount. If Anne Menary, the clerk, has already indicated that she will look at a reduced amount, I would move that we can have Ms. Menary provide that reduced amount based on her chief deputy's rate as opposed to her rate and that the appeal for not paying any fees be denied.
Okay, thank you.
There may still be comment, but I have made a motion.
Okay.
Support.
So there's.
Hang, hang on, just one second. Because I'm going to have to get the motion down because I don't have it in writing.
Okay.
Give it to me one more time.
Well, I would, I would move to deny the appeal of which her appeal was. She didn't want to pay any fees. So I think it's a denial of, my motion would be to deny not paying any fees, but to, of course, allow the clerk's office to present a reduced fee schedule based on the clerk's office being flexible and changing the amount for Mr. Kiefer to do the work as opposed to Ms. Menary doing the work.
Okay, thank you.
So I just want to understand this, Bill, and I know I'm watching just how you're maneuvering through this. So I just want to make sure what we're doing. So we have an item of new business that we're discussing. And then in the middle of new business, there's been a motion made. So how do we press forward with this? Can you give some guidance, please?
Well, the, the request, the appeal was requesting, she's, she, the quester appealed the charges for the FOIA request. The motion is made by Commissioner Gambrell to deny the request, but to allow, how do I say this? To allow the clerk to recalculate. That was my recommendation to grant the appeal in part for the, to the point of allowing the clerk to recalculate the fees based upon her chief deputy rates rather than her rates. I think this is a different side of the same coin. However you want to do it is fine. It's Commissioner Gambrell's motion, to me, states that the denial of the request is incumbent along with the recalculation of the fees by the clerk.
Okay.
I'm not sure exactly how you want to look at it, but it has the same result.
Yes, because when I read your motion, or your recommendation to the appeal, it was pretty clear what we were doing for new business. It's pretty extensive. I'm requesting this body consider the attached appeal of FOIA response by Ms. Renita Bonides. And then there's information around it, which sounds similar to what Todd is saying.
Yeah, I think Todd's, it seems to me, Todd's motion is to deny the appeal. And then it's, if that denial is support approved, then the issue's over. I would then, I would, if it's declined, that we, we don't approve the denial, or we decline the denial, then I will make a motion that we make a, that we accept, that we accept her appeal and that we give her the information at no charge. So it's a question about charges. Pardon?
That's not what she's appealing.
Not the charges?
Give her the information at no charge. She's asked for a recalculation. She's asked for, she's appealing the charges. She's not asking for no charge at all.
All right. We have a motion on the floor, and it has been supportive, and we have had discussion. Are we clear as to what we're voting on? Ms. Commissioner Smith?
Can I ask Anne a clarifying question first?
Yeah, yep. This is our time to discuss.
So when you are doing the recalculation that you, that you're going to do going forward, potentially, it would be recalculating it based on, on Mr. Kiefer's salary, not, not your salary?
That is.
And so at the, at the same time, it would be presumably a lesser amount, but at the same time, it would also not be anybody volunteering their time for free?
That's correct. This is.
Because there is, because, not to reduce it to monetarily terms, but you both work for the county. So even if you were to give your time of free, it's a cost to the taxpayers of the county.
It, right. And it's, and it's, you have to look at the information that's being requested and who has the ability to decipher the information. I can't just have you come in and volunteer and expect that you're going to know what a valid write-in is because of the training and experience that John and I have, which is why it's going to be both of us, but we're going to use John's rate of pay. There has to be at least two people when you break security. But I'm not charging for the second person only just for John's wage. That's what the new calculation will be.
Okay. And is there, has there ever been a time in Midland County with elections or with FOIA requests that we've said, you know, this is a very valuable thing? We need to have this, we're going to give this free of charge?
Well, I think, I mean, that's.
Or do the work for free of charge?
That's kind of a hard question to answer. I mean, we, we do try to work with people, but at the same time, this is taxpayers' money that we're going to be spending doing the work. And so because it could be an eight-hour day, I don't know. If it's something that I can do in 10 or 15 minutes, typically, we just give people the information if we can. But, you know, we have to make sure that we're not just giving away, you know, because once you get a request like this, then there's going to be lots of people who want information.
There's a precedent for doing it before.
The problem is that you have to make sure that, right. Because, I mean, we could be literally spending, I could, I could hire another employee. The county could pay for another employee just to address FOIA requests in the office and to make copies of things. So, I mean, it, it can get that far out of hand. So.
Thank you.
So I appreciate everybody's patience. I know the meeting's gone a little longer. When I go to the packet of what we've been given, there is Renita's request. It says, I am officially appealing the charges of this FOIA request.
Yeah, I saw that too.
So I don't know that she's saying, I'm officially appealing the charges of this FOIA request. So that's the first sentence. I just want, that's up to your determination. So are there any more? That's my discussion on it. Is there any more discussion? Anne, could you read the motion so we know clearly what we're voting on?
So the motion is by Commissioner Gambrell, supported by Commissioner Dorian. He is, Commissioner Gambrell is making a motion to deny the request to pay any fees, but to allow the clerk to present a reduced fee schedule to Ms. Bonides.
Wait, should we clarify? Is, how do you pronounce your name?
Bonides.
Okay. Ms. Bonides.
Well, it might be granting the appeal because we're going to allow a reduced fee. But I don't want to set a, hey, you know, let's make an appeal and we're going to grant them. So I guess, you know, the idea, however Bill Smith thinks we should present the motion, I know it's already been supported, is just the idea that Anne Menary is county clerk is going to present a lesser fee and that this appeal of these fees has run its course. You are, you are, that's why I couched it in terms of denying the appeal. This appeal has run its course, and Ms. Bonides will be presented with a reduced rate schedule that she can choose to pay or not.
Comment briefly, Commissioner Gambrell. The, my recommendation is to grant the appeal in part and allow the clerk to recalculate the appeal. There's no guarantee it might be less, it's just a recalculation.
Okay. So I will amend my motion at the request or at the suggestion of County Attorney Bill Smith to grant the appeal in part and provide a recalculated fee schedule based on John Kiefer's rate and not Anne Menary's rate.
Right. I appreciate the discussion. We do have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Gambrell. I'm a little confused because we had one in new business as well that I thought was capturing the same thing. So we're probably going to have two votes then, one on Commissioner Gambrell's and one on Bill's, or just the motion on the floor?
No, I amended mine. I amended my motion.
Just one?
Yep. So it's the same motion it was amended to what I last said.
I might offer up an amendment to the motion before we vote on that. I think that is.
So it's my motion I amended it?
Yes, and then I make an amendment to that motion. I have a motion that we amend that motion to strike the word said, recalculate, and put instead to complete the FOIA request at no charge.
Is, I'm sorry, is that allowed?
You can vote on the requested amendment. You can build a meeting.
Okay, hang on, just a second.
I think I said, right? I'm not quite sure. I was trying to strike out the part that the renegotiation, just strike and say that there be no fee. Ultimately, that's.
So I think.
Need to vote on the amendment of Todd's amended motion that's already been supported.
Correct.
Okay, hang on.
No, just voting if.
If you, if you agree to Commissioner Schulke's amendment or offer of amendment, that's what you're voting on right now.
Not the whole thing, just Larry's amendment.
Right. Okay, so Commissioner Schulke is making an amended motion to add the request for no fee. That's what we're voting on first.
Correct.
Hang on.
Is there a support?
Now, is there a support? That's the first thing.
I'm just looking at faces. Is it clear? So we'd need a support, then we can have discussion. So do we have a support for Commissioner Schulke's amendment?
I maintain support.
Okay, now we can have discussion. Is everybody clear about what we're voting on? The amendment to the amended motion. All right, we'll do a roll call vote, and we will have Anne read what we're voting on just one last time. So we're clear.
So this is the amended motion by Commissioner Schulke, supported by Commissioner Dorian, to add the request for no fee.
Okay, so we're voting either a yes or a no to add no fee.
Correct. And we're going to start with Mr. Schulke.
Yes.
Okay. Gambrell?
No.
Dorian?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
And Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Okay. So now we're going to vote on Commissioner Gambrell's motion, supported by Commissioner Dorian, that we're going to.
As amended by Larry.
As amended by Larry. So there's no reason to even vote on that, because there's no reason to even do that. Because I'm not going to recalculate it if you're going to give it to her for free. Right? Yeah, it just was.
It's an item of.
Okay, all right. So, motion by Commissioner Gambrell, supported by Commissioner Dorian, to grant the appeal in part and for the clerk to provide a recalculation for John Kiefer's pay scale. And then Commissioner Schulke's amended motion to make it so that there's no fee. That's the motion. So we're going to go to roll call. Commissioner Smith?
This, now this is voting on the whole thing?
Yes.
Okay. No.
Commissioner Schulke?
Yes.
Commissioner Gambrell?
No.
Commissioner Dorian?
Yes.
And Chairman Snyder?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. There you go.
As a point of clarification, as you put that in the minutes, I would appreciate it if it said, motion by Gambrell as amended by Schulke. Right, as public knowledge, as that gets put in the record, it needs to be clear. I'm sure you'll do it well, but it needs to be clear that it was amended.
Okay.
All right. So my apologies, but I want to back up to old business and the consideration of appointments to the various boards and commissions. That is a very important thing, and I'm very thankful that we have people that serve. I should have offered a public comment on that if any of those individuals are here and would like to say anything. And I should have opened it up for a commissioner discussion on the boards and commissions, old business. Thank you. I just needed to do that in my own, I needed to do that. It's very important. We appreciate people that serve on those boards and commissions. Senator Mayans, understanding that we also have an item of new business, another one, new business number two.
Date of June 13th, properly addressed. Ladies and gentlemen, I am requesting this body consider the attached appeal. Oh, sorry, that's the wrong one. Hang on, new business number two. Oh, here it is. Date of June 17th, properly addressed. The Midland County Board of Commissioners would like to request that the county clerk call a special meeting of the Midland County Board of Commissioners on Tuesday, July 1st, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. to be held in the Board of Commissioners room, Midland County Services Building. Respectfully submitted, and outside our chairperson, Larry Schulke, Todd Gambrell.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
What was the date on that? July what?
July 1st.
And do we have any commissioner discussion? I just want to pull up my.
So we should.
We, well, how about we do a motion first?
Okay. Can, ooh, I got a lot of stuff in front of me. My apologies. Can I get a motion and a support on new business number two, please?
So moved.
Support.
All right. And I didn't see any public comment. Is there any commissioner discussion?
To be clear, the reason we're doing this, this was brought up about the, the Consumers Energy is looking at having to do some work on junction boxes along butts. Energy is looking at having to do some work on junction boxes along bottles, and so they're, they want to have discussing the easement request for them to do that, if I'm understanding things.
For consumers, that's my understanding as well. Bridgette, is that correct?
In the event we need a special meeting for timing purposes, then we will have it. If not, it will be canceled.
All right. I've been informed that we can do it by voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimously carries. If we need a special meeting, we will have one on that date. All right. I think moving right along, we are on to commissioners' comments. And start with Commissioner Gambrell.
I would say this was a relatively disappointing meeting in the sense that the Board of Commission has decided to treat certain individuals differently than other individuals, and that's a slippery slope and not something that we should allow. First off, all the folks from Sanford showed up, and we limited them to three minutes. We gave Ms. Bonadie's, who is a regular supporter here, which we appreciate her comments, but, you know, just because we appreciate her doesn't mean we can give her extra time. So as a general policy, I don't think the board should be treating people differently.
Thank you, Commissioner Gambrell. Commissioner Dorian?
I appreciate everyone's patience in viewing how the sausage is made.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
I didn't see this coming, but I would like to strongly echo Commissioner Gambrell's comments. We have rules in this board to treat people equally. We don't discriminate against some people. We don't, hey, we like Joe Schmo, let's give him extra time. That's not, that's not the way we've conducted business. There's been plenty of people that I would have liked to have given extra time to throughout the years, and that's not how it's done. Everybody's equal before the board. Everybody pays the same amount. For FOIA things, it's, yeah, I, I respect the decisions this board has made. I do not agree with them, but I am hopeful we continue to remember to treat all of the residents of Midland County equally going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bon is absent. Commissioner Schulke?
First, thank you for your comments. I, and I, I agree actually with you, what I, what I thought in this special case, since election integrity and reporting, there's been so much fear across the country about that issue that I thought, in this case, especially after I did some of my own research and then saw for candidates in my own district that I thought were not, could not see the reports. And so you guys are actually having a very valid point of whether should I, should we have done that? Should I have done that? I just, I knew, it seems like election results are, are so important, so that's why I did that. And so, but I certainly supported the other ones, the people on the other end, certainly wanted a special treatment, but there's this candidate, so that's what I did. And I also so appreciate all the ones from, on the, involved with the Four Lakes Task Force, Paul Chris, that this is a regular, Kayla, I prefer to bring that, it was very, very thorough. And Mr., you know, really agree with the other residents with all the incredible suffering that they went through. It's, this is, I hope we can do something about that. I don't know, but you brought up some very good points, but we do appreciate that when people would share their things, and it was a disaster. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Commissioner Stamos is absent. Myself, I think we had a very thorough meeting. I appreciate everybody's patience. I believe that we were all elected to do the very best job that, that we can, and I believe that we all did what we thought was appropriate today, although not, not easy. So I appreciate our commissioners. I appreciate our team at the county. I know when we let individuals have public comment, we don't, we don't know them, we don't have a relationship with them, so we let them talk, and we appreciate our elected officials. I appreciate Ann and John, and, and we know them personally, and we let them talk as well. So it's, it's tough to decipher. I'm thankful for our team and thankful for the job that we did here today. I was surprised at how many Sanford residents came with Anna. Happy to hear what they had to discuss, happy to hear what Kayla had to discuss. We appreciate Four Lakes Task Force as well and the constituents. Now we'll move on to meeting schedule, and we'll start with Commissioner Gambrell.
I don't have my calendar in front of me. I apologize. So no comment at this time.
It's okay. And then we shorten our schedule, so it's going to be a lot. It's going to be a whole month of what we're working on because we do just meet once a month during the summer. So Commissioner Dorian?
So are we, excuse me, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Are we, are we reporting from June 7th, today, through our, our next meeting, not July 1st, but July?
July 22nd. Yep. So anything on your schedule from today until July 2nd?
No meetings to announce, Madam Chairwoman.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Smith?
I thank you. I'd like to announce, I plan to attend the city council meeting on June 23rd. That's at 7:00 p.m. And then I am going to the NACO Conference, National Association of Counties Conference in Philadelphia. That will be from Friday, July 11th through July 14th, or I guess it ends that, that evening. So flying back on Tuesday, July 15th. As of right now, Human Services Committee is scheduled for 11:00 a.m. on July 15th, but that might have to be rescheduled. Okay, okay, so this to the 16th. And then that is all I have to report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Schulke?
We have in the Homer Township meeting tomorrow, the 18th, at 7:00 p.m. at their, their township hall. Next Tuesday, we have the Community Mental Health, Central Michigan Finance Board meetings in Costa County at the Community Mental Health facility there. On Thursday, the 26th, we'll be having the Michigan Community Action Agency, 4:30, we'll have a training update, so it's been quite a bit of time there. That's in Farwell. Into July, there'll be the Green Township meeting on July 8th, Porter and Jasper meetings on July 9th, Midland County Public Parks and Rec meeting, or is on July 9th, and I'd be asking Eric or Elena, commissioners, Dorian, to cover for me, because I've got the Porter and Jasper Township meetings that day. We have the Township meeting on July 14th on the, and we'll be announcing, Marcus and Tier about to finance a committee meeting that will be on July 16th, and I'd be attending Sanford Lake Improvement Board meeting. Commissioner Snyder will say something about that on the 17th, and the North Michigan County Association meeting will be on Monday, July 21st, up in Roscommon.
Thank you. As you can imagine, I have a full schedule, so July, or June 19th, Midland County Road Commission, 9:00 a.m. at the Road Commission. City of Coleman on the 24th at 7:00 p.m. in the City of Coleman. Wickham Lake Improvement Board, June 26th. Geneva Township on July 8th at 7:00 p.m. We do have the Midland County Parks and Rec. That's also our picnic on the 9th. And then at 7:00 p.m., Jerome Township that same evening. July 14th, we have the Village of Sanford at 7:00 p.m. July 15th, we have our committee meetings. I hope they get moved, but we have A&amp;O at 2:30 that day. I also have Four Lakes Task Force at 12:00 p.m., sandwiched between them all, and that's up in Gladwin. So a full day. I'll, may have to ask for a sub for Human Services. On June, July 17th, Midland County Road Commission at 9:00 a.m., Sanford Lake Improvement Board at 7:00 p.m. On the 21st, Warren Township at 6:30 in Warren Township. And that is all I have to announce. May I get a motion to...
Madam Chairwoman, motion to adjourn?
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned until next Tuesday, July 22nd, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. To meet in an executive session of the Board of Commissioners and for the committees to resume their duties. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Larry. Ms. Bonadie's or Bonadie's or however you say your name?